I follow the order to the regular city council meeting. I invite everyone to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, we're going to go into the officials' comments and reports. Who would like to go first? Okay, well, John, don't say anything until after we go on to sign it down. Okay, thank you. Okay, then I'll start it then. Tonight, I am announcing that I will be stepping back from the position of Mayor of the City of Lathir Village. And let me be clear, I am not stepping away because I am tired, overwhelmed, or too busy, as some colleagues and a few residents have suggested. I'm stepping away because I understand seasons. I understand purpose, and I understand when God is shifting your assignment. I have served this community for 14 years. Two years as councilwoman, four years as Mayor Pro Tem, and the last eight as your mayor. My promise from the very beginning was to serve the people who felt unheard, unseen, or overlooked. And I've done that not for applause, not for attention, but because that is the work that makes things happen. When COVID hit and uncertain swept, uncertainty swept through our homes, a partnership was formed with Farms to Family, and we made sure families had access to fresh food and we got to work to make sure everyone got it. When SNAP benefits were threatened, a partnership with For- excuse me, Forgotten Harvest, so families had one less burden on their plate, and the city stepped up again. And every Thanksgiving, if a family needed a turkey, we made sure they received one, quietly, consistently, without the need to announce every move. As women, we carry so much. We work full-time jobs, raise children, take classes, care for aging parents, run households, and yes, even perceived to lead a city. And I knew that little girls were watching also. They needed to see what strength looks like when the odds are stacked against you. They need to see what it means to stand tall in face of adversity. I hope I showed them courage, resilience, and what it looks like to keep going even when life presses hard. My advocacy has never stopped at the city limits. Whether in Washington DC, Lansing, or Beverly Hills, California, I have taken the voice of Lathir Village with me into every room I've entered. I advocated for our city in spaces most will never see because this is how change happens. And most of my work has been behind the scenes. When we needed recommendation letters, I wrote them. When families experienced loss, I came to the funerals and made sure that they were taken care of. And when someone was in crisis, I showed up. Service does not have to be broadcast to be meaningful. When our residents faced repeated and prolonged power outages, a partnership was formed with the City of Southfield, and we demanded accountability from DTE. We pushed for change, and as a result, we now have direct access to senior leadership at DTE when problems occur. Access that came from advocacy, persistence, and relationship building. Even when grant funding was tried, tried to be attained, including the grant opportunity to Annie Lathir School. Once I've learned about any type of grant that we were going after, I immediately contact the state and federal legislators, department directors, and decision-makers positioned to support our applications. That is advocacy without announcing every move, and this is how I've always operated. Over 14 years, I have worked with six city managers, four city clerks, two chief of police, almost three. Through transitions, disagreements, growth, and victories, I remain committed. When I first ran, I ran on making a promise to upgrade our infrastructure. We did it. My next focus was to sell the House in the Woods property. That's done. And the last was to address the future of Annie Lathir Schools, and now we're in active process of getting that done. And my attendance reflects my dedication. In the last eight years as mayor, the only meeting I missed were during the week my son passed away, the deepest heartbreak in my life, and most recently when I had COVID. That alone should show my commitment to the city and its people. A moment recently confirmed that my season was shifting. At the Lathir Village Police Department Thanksgiving Dinner, Pastor Scotty prayed for Chief McKee and quoted Ecclesiastes 3:1, "To everything there is a season and a time for every purpose under the heaven." As soon as I heard those words in that room, in that prayer, I knew my season as mayor was coming to a close. And while there is sadness in letting go of a role I have loved so deeply, this is also excitement about what God is doing next. With State Representative Jason Hoskins seeking the state senate and with his endorsement, I will be running for his seat in the Michigan House of Representatives. My service to Lathir Village is not in here. It simply shifts into a new chapter. Before I close, I want to say this. I pray that our community learns how to work together. This council, our next mayor included. Our goals are the same, to keep Lathir as great as it was, as great as it is, and as great as it can become. Unity would take us further than division ever will. I'm not saying goodbye. I am simply announcing that I will not seek another term as mayor. Thank you for trusting me. Thank you for challenging me. Thank you for allowing me to serve loudly when needed, silently when necessary, and wholeheartedly at all times. It has been the honor of my life. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Some should be very scared that I gave up that seat because now I can say whatever I want to. Anyone else want to say anything?
Thank you, Kelly, for your steadfast leadership. You, even in making an announcement like that, you're still leading.
And we'll continue.
And we'll continue to do so, I am sure.
I appreciate that.
I'll just say, job well done.
Thank you.
Set a great example for the next mayor.
Thank you. Well, if nothing else is to be said, I will adjourn the 2023, 2025 city council.
And I would like to call to order the 2025 city council at 7:38 PM. I would like to announce our election results. The City of Lathir Village today announces the certified results of the November 4th, 2025 general election. The Oakland County Elections Division has completed its canvas, and all results are now official. Voters selected candidates for the Lathir Village City Council, and turnout reflected the community's continued commitment to civic engagement and local leadership. The certified results are as follows. Jalen C. Jennings, 1,124 votes, 34.47%. Bruce Cantor, 1,115 votes, 34.19%. John Susannas, 771 votes, 23.64%. Carlisa Mathis, write-in, 218 votes, 6.69%. Rejected write-ins, 33 votes, 1.01%. Jalen C. Jennings and Bruce Cantor, as the top two vote-getters, have been elected to serve four-year terms on the city council. John Susannas, as the third highest vote-getter, has been elected to serve a two-year term. I would invite all the elected candidates to the front for your oath of office. And you can all stand there for the camera shot. Raise your hands, and then, of course, say your name at the right part. I...
I, Bruce Cantor.
Okay. Do solemnly swear affirm...
Do solemnly swear, everyone, affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Opple all federal laws.
Opple all federal laws.
State laws. And the ordinances of the City of Lathir Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathir Village.
And I will discharge my duties of city council council member...
And I will discharge my duties of city council council member.
For the City of Lathir Village, Michigan.
For the City of Lathir Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
At this time, everybody can find two slips that were paper clipped to your agendas. The highlighted pink sticky note can easily pull off without pulling paper. And you are to indicate your choice on those ballots. One is for mayor, and one is for Mayor Pro Tem. And I will be collecting those in the box when you are done.
You want both of them? You don't want both of them at the same time?
No, no, we just want the mayor.
We just want, you want just the mayor.
Just the mayor. Side the mayor, and then we'll go Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah.
We have five votes for mayor to be Bruce Cantor. Congratulations. We will do the Mayor Pro Tem, and then we'll do the two oaths of office.
Oh, you see, I'm trying to get out the seat.
And we have five votes for Mikael Garrett to be Mayor Pro Tem.
And I don't need a plaque. I already have one of those.
Can we come up front here?
Just stay for this meeting.
Should they come up front or stay there?
Mayor, the Mayor Pro Tem.
All right. So repeating after me. I, Bruce Cantor.
Bruce Cantor.
Do solemnly swear affirm...
Do solemnly swear affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Uphold all federal laws.
Uphold all federal laws.
State laws.
State laws.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathir Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathir Village.
And I will discharge my duties of mayor...
And I will discharge my duties as mayor.
Of the City of Lathir Village, Michigan.
Of the City of Lathir Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right. So I, Mikael Garrett.
Mikael Garrett.
Mikael Garrett. Do solemnly swear affirm...
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Uphold all federal laws.
Uphold all federal laws.
State laws.
State laws.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathir Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathir Village.
And I will discharge my duties of mayor, Mayor Pro Tem.
And I would discharge my duties as Mayor Pro Tem.
Of the city council for the City of Lathir Village, Michigan.
Of the city council of the City of Lathir Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
You know I'm, you know I'm pale and compulsive.
Yes, I do. That's why I'm doing it.
All right. I'll call the council meeting for a regular council meeting for November 24th to order. First agenda item is a roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garrett.
Yes. I mean, here. Here.
Present.
Mayor Cantor.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Councilmember Susannas.
Okay, well, before I move to approving the agenda, I want to congratulate John for his election. I want to congratulate Jalen again for his reelection. And I just want to reiterate one more time, you know, thank you for your leadership for the last eight years and, you know, your professionalism. And, you know, your speech was amazing. You did leave out a few things, like, like leading through years of no city manager and contentious council meetings, and, you know, you set a great example for me. And we have the same management team that we had before, same management team that we had before. And I think we'll continue to be effective like it has been for the last eight years, so.
Thanks.
Say it again so the mic...
Hopefully, my voice is loud enough that it may pick up on the mic. All right, so I'll take a motion for the approval of the agenda. John, you want to do that? Is that honor is your first, first motion of your council career?
Move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been motioned and approved. Any discussion? All right, then I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Susannas.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda will be, we have three presentations tonight. The first is the Lathir Village Police Department Service Awards, which I assume the future chief is going to be. I'd be remiss without saying, Kelly, we're going to miss you, but I'm glad you're still here. And good luck to everything you take on.
Thank you.
We go way back, so.
I know. Thank you.
Okay, good luck. Mr. Susannas, congratulations on your, your seat there, sir. I'm looking forward to working with you as well. Congratulations, Jalen and Jason, and of course, Mr. Mayor, Bruce Cantor. You've had a smile on your ear ever since that was announced. So I wanted to, first off, talk a little bit about your Lathir Village Police Department. And I know we have some tough times ahead in the city, but this is nothing to do with it. But as taking over as the future chief, I wanted to discuss some things with you. What the men and women of your police department are doing on a regular basis. First, we want to thank Mr. Holly for being here. Christopher Holly, you can raise your hand. Christopher Holly comes to us from the Oakland Police Academy. He works for an automotive parts supplier full-time. He's a manager there and manages a lot of people. And he had a calling in his life in working full-time. He wanted to serve his community, and with that, he thought the best way to do that was going through, not only working full-time with a wife and three children, but he put himself through the part-time police academy. So basically, three, four nights a week, instead of seeing his family every night, he was working all day and going to the part-time police academy in order to fulfill this calling, which is a tremendous undertaking. So we thank you for, for that calling, and you following those, following those, that thing in your ear to go. As I mentioned, he is a family man. He went to Bowling Green University. He is a, grew up in Southfield, went to Southfield-Lathir High School.
Southfield High.
Southfield, I'm sorry.
You won't hold that against him.
I knew I was going to miss that. But, but he is a local resident, so he's staying local and serving the community right next door to where he lives. So we really appreciate you having on here, making this a place to come here. So we look forward to having you around. Just so you guys do know, he is technically going to be a part-time police officer for us. But there are some other awards I wanted to talk about. I'm going to get to this one last year because this one is the most recent. But let's, let's discuss a couple of them. Keith Roberts. He's my senior day shift guy. Been around for a long time. How many years you have on, 11?
10 years.
10 years, okay. Keith has become an integral part of our agency. He does all of our firearms and FTO. He has been working his tail off, I can tell you that. We are burning our FTOs out with how much training they're doing, and they have just stayed steadfast in how much they've worked for this city. And I can't say enough to these guys how much they've FTO'd and how much in debt I am to you guys for how much you guys do. But there are moments that these guys go above and beyond the call of duty. And Officer Roberts did just that. So I recommended him for a departmental accommodation for this, stemming from an incident on August 28th, 2025, when a Lathir resident came to the front desk just to request a police report. During this victim, an elderly resident, she was scammed out of $40,000. Suspect was able to make our resident believe that there was a clerical error in a bank deposit in which she overpaid $40,000. And being the honest person that she is, immediately went to her bank and got a certified check. She shipped it to an address in Flushing, New York. And after doing that, realizing she may have been scammed, she comes to her police department for help. Officer Roberts took the report and could have simply just turned it over to the detective bureau, but he didn't do that. With his knowledge and time on the job, he searched that address where the money had been sent, and it turns out it was a FedEx authorized delivery location. Officer Roberts contacted the manager there, who was able to locate the manager, the package sitting on a shelf just minutes before the suspect got there to pick up. Was it six minutes? It was something really short. By the time his phone call was made, it was like six minutes, otherwise this resident would have been off $40,000. So he was able to get, on top of that, having some investigative background, he didn't just take it there. He told the manager at the store to get a good description and a plate on the vehicle for the suspect. The manager did just that at Officer Roberts' request. After that, he went even further and contacted a federal agent who takes these cases that cross state lines and got him all that investigative information. That suspect is still under investigation. But it's no doubt, if it weren't for his quick actions, a resident of ours would have been off $40,000, and we know how much that is to our seniors. So Officer Roberts, we thank you for your service. I wanted to recommend another officer, a departmental commendation for his continued commitment to the department. We talked about Officer Roberts' FTOing, but one of our other FTOs here at the department is Officer Houston, who actually, on his own, went to the afternoon shift so he could continue FTO-ing after being so burnt out. He actually went to another shift when he has seniority to stay on days. So Jeremy, your unwavering commitment to the department doesn't go unnoticed, okay? Just like, just Officer Roberts. Officer Houston has continued his commitment to the background by doing, by doing all of our background investigations for applicants applying to the Lathir Village Police Department. In his, how many years here? Eight? Nine?
Eight here, 18 there.
Okay. In his eight years here, he's conducted 42 backgrounds on prospective applicants who are looking to be hired by the Lathir Village Police Department. And as you know, very few actually have made it through. These backgrounds take several weeks and months to complete and are very daunting. Each background, whether the applicant is hired or not, officers required, Officer Houston are required to do a deep dive into their backgrounds, leaving no stone unturned. Officer Houston is required to contact dozens of police agencies searching for records on the applicant. He's also required to interview family, friends, acquaintances, to get an understanding of their true character. These backgrounds are completed, while Officer Houston is still required to complete all of his normal road duties. During our recent MPO's audit, an arm of the Michigan State Police came in and reviewed several current personnel files. Per the MPO's auditor, our backgrounds conducted by Officer Houston were some of the most thorough time, some of the most thorough backgrounds he has seen during his time as an auditor. Officer Houston's responsibilities as a pre-employment interviewer and a background investigator make his role critical to our current and future operations. Thank you for your service. Last, I wasn't going to throw this one in here, but I can tell you that the average law enforcement officer in the span of their career goes through roughly 800 critical incidents in their life, where the average, the average citizen goes through about two to five in their lifetime, okay? So, I don't know, being here 18, 19 years, knowing these, these two guys, when they came in and told me about this run, I could see the look on their faces. They had just gone through something pretty serious. And so I reviewed their body cameras and saw just that. And so I'm going to read this to you. I'm going to leave a lot of information out just to protect parties involved. And Christopher, I don't, you don't even know this, but I'm actually, this is your award tonight too, buddy. This was his second shift here as a police department.
Wow.
These officers are both being recommended for Meritorious Service Awards for their actions in early November. Officer Holly, again, who was on his FTO program's second day, were dispatched to an address in the city for a resident who was having suicidal ideations and threatening to jump headfirst off a second-story roof of their home. Officers arrived to make contact with the individual in crisis, subject to crawl out a very tiny bathroom window on the second floor and was threatening to end their life. Officer Houston, who has extensive training in hostage negotiations and crisis intervention, spoke with that resident in an attempt to get them to voluntarily exit the roof with no bail. Officers spent several minutes pleading with the subject, but the subject would not get off the roof and continue to make threats to end their life. Officer Houston even shared a true story of significant loss he experienced in order to gain that person's trust. The video was very hard to watch. I can tell you it brought tears to my eyes. Just as Officer Houston began to make a connection with the individual, that person came just close enough where Officer Houston could grab that individual, secure their wrist, and without hesitation, Officer Holly jumped in, and they were able to save that subject and pull that person through the window. That person was eventually turned over to m- That person was eventually turned over to mental health professionals to seek the help that they needed. Since that run, that resident has reached out to me several times thanking their officers for their heroic actions those days. So, guys, thank you very much, that resident and us all deserve, or all appreciative of the work that you guys do.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so we will move on to the next agenda item, which is a presentation by Mayor of the fiscal 2425 audit.
Thank you, Mayor Cantor. We have Tyler Baker, who is our go-to auditor. He was also here last year, so he is familiar with our presentation style. I'll turn it over to him.
I feel like, I feel like I'm gonna be very underwhelming after those, which were fantastic presentations. Like Mike said, my name is Tyler Baker, Senior Manager at Mayor Custerison. What we'll be going over is the audit report presentation for the year-end 6/30 of 2025. First off, I want to thank Mike and Michelle and all of their team for all of their effort. They were available, they were responsive, which is appreciative throughout the audit process. We understand their jobs don't stop when we show up. And so I think it's important for the board to be aware of their availability and responsiveness throughout the whole audit process. You should have a few documents in front of you. You have the bound report. You'll have two letters, and then what will mainly be going over today is this presentation. Nothing's new in this, in this presentation, it's just regurgitated information from the bound report. But for ease of presenting and ease of flipping through pages, we'll be going through this PowerPoint. So if you guys have any questions at any point, feel free to yell out, and we'll get them answered. What we'll be going over is the independent auditors' report, the fund financial statements, some supplementary information, the independent auditors' report on internal controls, and then some upcoming accounting pronouncements to look forward to next year. Independent auditors' report is pages one of three of the bound report. Those are the only three pages that are that of the auditors, the rest are that of the, of management. There's four options of what an opinion on the set of financial statements can be. It can be an unmodified, a qualified, an adverse, or a disclaimed opinion. In the current year, the city financial statements have an opinion of an unmodified or clean audit opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that us as independent auditors can put on a set of financial statements, which basically states that they're in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The next, this page here kind of walks through some of the sections within the independent auditors' report. Top section is responsibilities of management for the financial statements. The financial statements, as I mentioned earlier, are that of the city's. Management is responsible for the preparation of the fair presentation, as well as for the internal control, design, and implementation. Us as the auditors' responsibility is to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatements, whether due to fraud or error, and to issue said auditors' report as I mentioned previously. Now to get into some numbers. So pages 15 and through 18 of the bound report are the government fund financial statements. These are on a modified accrual basis or current resource focus. Items such as capital improvements, debt payments are expensed rather than affecting the balance sheet. So this is as of a snapshot in time, working left to right. This is for the governmental funds in total, so that would be your two major funds, which is your general fund, street improvement fund. And then you also have non-major funds, which include major and local street, and then capital acquisition fund. Total fund balance as of 6/30 of 25 was just over 2.7 million. There are five categories of what a fund balance could be. It could be from most restrictive to least, would be non-spendable, which is items such as prepaid and inventory. Restricted fund balance, which would be externally or legislatively restricted. Committed, which would be board. Assigned, which would be management, and then unassigned for, for use in operations. As of 6/30, the city had unassigned fund balance of just over 603,000. That far right column now. For the city as a whole, unrestricted fund balance, 603,000. As a percentage of total expenditures for the city for governmental funds was just under 5.8 million, or approximately 10.4%. For comparison, the prior year was 8%, so an increase of approximately 2%. If you were to look at unassigned, which the general fund is the only fund that has unassigned fund balance, of the 603,000, as a percentage of just the general fund's operating expenditures, it would be a fund balance of approximately 13.5%, which is up from 11% from the prior year. The next page is general fund specific. So this just walks on some highlights of what the general fund had for revenues, expenditures, and change in fund balance. Total revenues for the general fund, just over 5 million. Expenditures, just over 4.6 million. For a net change in fund balance of approximately 201,000, increasing the ending total fund balance up to 986,000. The next couple graphs I have here are some five-year trends for the general fund specifically, with the blue being revenues and other financing sources, red being the expenditures, and then the green being total fund balance. Overall, looking from 24 to 25, revenues decreased from approximately 5.2 to 5.1 million. Expenditures decreased consistently from 5 million to 4.9 million, overall increasing the fund balance, as mentioned on the previous page, from 745,000 to 986,000. Revenue slight decrease, majority is due to special assessments that you had in 24, and a decreased amount in 25 with corresponding increase in tax bases. So those netted out to be pretty consistent from a revenue standpoint. Expenditures decreased mainly due to the corresponding infrastructure from said special assessments last year, and not adding as much in the current year specific to the general fund set. Overall, the last two years slightly increasing fund balance in the general fund, with the previous three years using up some fund balance, mainly due to infrastructure improvements over those years. Next page is, again, just a, just a line graph showing generally the same thing, but I think sometimes it's visually easier to see fluctuations from year to year. Overall, revenues consisting, staying relatively consistent with slight upticks. And as we mentioned here in revenues and expenses, you'll have the one-time planned expenditures that will, that will note in the next year, or excuse me, in the next slide. But this first pie chart is the main sources of revenue for the general fund, with the blue being obviously the largest there, approximately 72%, which consists of taxes and special assessments. In the current year, 70 of the 72% is from property taxes overall. The majority of the, of the percentages from the prior year to the current year were overall very consistent for the revenues and the expenditures, as we note in a couple slides. The next one here is, is a line graph that shows the trend of where the revenues come from. You can see that top line, which is increasing as expected, with tax base increases over the last five years, as well as some special assessments throughout those years as well, with the taxes and special assessments being the vast majority of where the general fund's revenue comes from. You'll see the green graph having those slight upticks in 21 and 23 would be the recognition of the ARPA. For the most part, that is what those slight upticks in the intergovernmental are. Next pie chart is the expenses, so we got a couple, two graphs here on expenditures. The expenses for the general fund for 2025, you have the blue being general government, the red being public safety, and then the green being public works. Just over 50% of the general fund's expenditures were public safety related, which overall is consistent from year to year, being right around that 50% mark. Next is a line graph, again, showing generalized, general fluctuations from any given year. For instance, the green being public works, you have some slight increases depending on timing of infrastructure improvements. But the general idea to point out on this graph is that you're consistent with the public safety being approximately 50% of expenditures and general government remaining as your second largest over that, over that trend of year. What we're gonna get into now is the water and sewer fund, so this is a separate accounting. So this is items of long-term nature are included on the balance sheet. So fixed assets, long-term debt are included on the balance sheet rather than expensed as principal expense. For instance, total operating revenues for water and sewer fund, just over 2.2 million, with operating expenses being just under 2.2 million. Non-operating revenues being 323,000, these are things like grants, interest income, things like that. Net change in, net position was an increase in the net position for the water and sewer fund of 327,000, increasing the net position to just over 8.9 million for fiscal year 25. The next graph shows similar, you will see fluctuations in that green, which maybe is a little different than what we were, would have looked at in the fund, in the governmental funds. So what's in the green is unrestricted net position. When you get into the full accrual, which is what this is, it introduces a net investment in capital assets, which is essentially your investment in, in capital assets, net of any debt related to said. So that's where you get fluctuations based on new debt or payments of debt and capital improvement additions. And so the main idea here is four out of the last, four out of these five years, total net position had revenues of, over expenses, with the 2025 being that far right. Unrestricted net position of operating expenses being approximately 41% as of 2025. Overall revenues, expenditures, as you see in the 24 and 25, being pretty consistent from year to year. Pages 55 and 56 of the financials are the upcoming accounting standards. The two are GASB 103 and 104. I'll touch on GASB 104 first. Disclosure of certain capital assets, so this is financial statement specific, where if you have right-of-use assets for leases or subscription-based IT arrangements, they specify that you need to report that in the notes, broken out between equipment and building, not just lumped altogether. So again, that's on the financial statement side. That'll be our responsibility, which is no different than we would have already done it. So really, there's no change for that GASB, but it is a new one. GASB 103 will have a little bit more of a financial statement effect, not from a number standpoint, but from a reporting and a footnote standpoint. So the majority of what this one did, and they pared it back quite a bit from what it originally was gonna be about five years ago, they'll be more consistent in the management discussion and analysis, which is the first pages in the financial statements. So there will be some wording changes in that. The main change will be in the RSI, or the Required Supplementary Information, which would be where your budget to actual is for your general fund and any special revenue funds, major special revenue funds. Right now, there's an original, original budget, a final budget, actual expenses, and then a variance between the final budget and actual. What this new pronouncement is, is inserting a column for variances between original and final. And if there's significant variations from original to final, it requires note disclosure right behind that schedule for why. So it's not saying it's an issue or it's a problem, it's just saying, the GASB is saying we need to disclose what that might be. That could be grants that you didn't anticipate getting, that now you got, so which is why revenue would increase. You may have corresponding expenses associated with that. So it just requires some additional disclosures that we will rely on management on as they make amendments throughout the year for budgets. But again, most of which is in the financial statements and doesn't have an actual numbers or a change in accounting in regards to that pronouncement. Mainly just more information in those disclosures. The next two pages are pension and OPEP schedules, so these are snippets out of the Required Supplementary Information. This first one being the pension plan. Left two columns are the last two years. This states 2024 because it's as of the MERS plan year-end. So you guys are a part of an agent multi-employer plan. And so the whole plan as a whole has a valuation, which the most recent available would be 12/31/24, which is why it says 24, not what your fiscal year-end is, which would be 25. Overall, the total pension liability as of 6/30, as of your audit report for the most recent valuation, was just over 8.9 million. All the way at the bottom, or two lines up from the bottom, you have plan net position or assets in the fund, in the plan of just over, over 6.45 million for a net pension liability of just over 2.5 million, down from 2.6 million. Overall, plan funded percentage increased from 71% to 72% over, year over year. MERS statewide average for this plan was 75%, so right around where statewide average would be plus or minus a couple of percentage.
And where, where, when it drops to a certain point, was it like 60%, that's when we're required to?
60.
Okay.
That's when we're required to.
To make a.
To give back.
Give, put more money into it.
In the last couple of years, there were grants for municipalities that were under the 60% to get them up to. The next is OPEP. This is, or other post-employment benefit plans, so this would be tertiary healthcare essentially. You guys are a single-member plan, so you get your own valuation. So this is as of your fiscal year-end of 6/30 of 25. Looking at the same numbers, total OPEP liability decreased from 2.9 million, total liability to an estimated 2.6 million, with the plan net position increasing from 502,000 to assets of approximately 601,000 for a net OPEP liability decreasing from approximately 2.4 million to just over 2 million, increasing the fund, funded percentage of 17% to just under 23%. As you see, 2021 was the first year that the city started contributing to the plan. Previous to that is per liana, pay as you go. And so getting a statewide average for OPEP is a lot more difficult because funding percentages varies drastically. You could have a very significant fund that's overfunded, and you could have small, a number of entities that contribute zero still. So I think for this one is just having a plan of what the future, what you would like to get to, and having a plan accordingly for those funded percentages. And as you can see, over those years, you've increased it approximately 4% to 6% each, each of the, the last five years there.
Is there a percentage where you would maybe like to see us at, or is this like?
I think that would be a management decision overall. There's, when I say there's a wide range.
Right, I understand.
We currently put about 50 grand in a year, but we're paying as we go. And I think we've got a balance of about 450,000 in there, so that covers if we, something happens.
Next page is findings or management letter. So prior year, there were five findings. There was two in the current year, one of which being material journal entries proposed throughout the audit process. The second one being disaster recovery plan. Throughout the audit process, there were entries that needed to be made that were noted through inquiry or through documentation, mainly revolving the pension and OPEP plan as you get the valuation, those entries, and then at least receivable and deferred inflow. And then on the disaster recovery plan, main idea behind that one is improving the plan so that there is a plan of getting the city back to operations standpoint, of what the plan moving forward is, testing that disaster recovery plan in case something were to happen. What are the steps to get the city back to operations for its residents? That is what I have for the presentation. I know it's a lot. Any further questions? Then what we're asked.
I, since you, just based on the two things that you were just mentioning in the management letter, I'd actually ask Administrator Green about those specific items. So relative to the material journal entries, you wanna talk to me about that micro history, what you wrote me?
Yep, so regarding material journal entries proposed by the auditors. Andrew, thanks to Michelle and Jess for the majority. Entry, thanks to Michelle and Jess for the majority that I'll be looking on this. The entries were related to adjustments that are not normally, are only normally posted at the end of the year, such as restricted assets, prepaid assets, and capital assets. These entries are often more specialized in nature, are purposely not posted prior to the audit as they require discussion with the city's auditors prior to posting by city staff. Also, the city staff will add newly identified unposted year-end journal entries to its workflow year-end process for next year review to reduce the number of unposted entries identified by the auditors. City staff also reviews and discusses each identified unposted journal entry with the city auditors to understand why it is being made and the impact on the financial statements to mitigate future unposted entries. And then as for the disaster recovery plan, the city does actually have an active disaster recovery plan that covers threats coming into the city. This was accomplished actually during the police department accreditation process. So while the auditors have knowledge that we do have one, they want to see specifics on how our financial information would be recovered in the event of a successful attack. So we're going to be working with PD and our IT contractor to modify our plan to include this information for next year's audit.
Thanks, Mike.
Can you send that to Oliver?
Please. So the disaster recovery plan is pretty clear. My question for the auditors around the journal entries is, it sounds like some of these entries are always going to be entered after discussion with the auditor. So should we anticipate seeing this finding every year? And do you see that in other communities?
Having material journal entries is not uncommon. We, and as Mike mentioned, throughout the audit process, we've already begun to talk about specifics. If we can get some of those made prior, some of it is due to timing, but there are fairly complicated calculations that go into specifically pension and OPEB also. So in the future, we absolutely will work with management to see if we can decrease the management, the auditor journal entries throughout the process. So yes, yes, most likely there will be journal entries, but we could absolutely decrease some of those throughout the years.
Okay. Is that, so do you have that same experience in other communities that you audit?
Yes.
Quick question. I was looking at the revenues graph.
Yep.
So in other cities, do you tend to see more revenue trends, or are these like the common, what, before? Do you ever see any other revenue trends?
So you're just saying the reasoning for revenue shifting over the years?
Right.
Yes. Overall, which I think everybody's probably aware of, that tax base increasing over the last four or five years significantly has increased the property taxes. And then the interest would be the other piece where it's varying degrees to every entity, but that interest income has also increased over the years. Where previously, it was such a small percentage of that interest rate, over the last two or three years, we've seen that uptake as well. So yes. And then you'll have fluctuations depending on who is able to obtain grants as well, besides ARPA grants. So you could have fluctuations in that intergovernmental, specific to separate grants that could be obtained.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I had a question on the detail. So on page 10 of the actual audit itself, under capital assets and debt administration, it said the level of net obligations is $86,261 more this year.
Yeah.
If we didn't take on any additional debt and we were paying off that, how does that number go up?
So compensated absences was a new pronouncement in the current year. Without getting into too much detail on that, the compensated absences is included in that obligation. And essentially, instead of only factoring what's paid out at retirement, or if someone were terminated, it factors in the estimate of someone using said PTO as well. So inherently, almost across the board, compensated absences balances are increasing for any, anybody subject to GASB pronouncements. Good question.
Two other minor things. Obviously, these are things for next year. But on page 29, you know, there's a third bullet point indicates that budget shall be adopted no later than the third Monday of May. For us, it's actually June, isn't it? Because we changed that in our...
Can you restate what page you were...
29, third bullet down. And then one last thing to, on page 32, where you're talking about pension, and then the following page, OPEB. It'd be great if we could put in that first introductory sentence, if we could, it says the city offers a defined benefit pension plan to its employees. If we could add something for those hired before, because it gets confusing. We get hit with questions a lot about, you know, why we offer a pension, why we're still offering a pension program, or we're not offering one. It's a legacy program.
Yep.
And so on the following page for OPEB as well, it'd be great if in the future years you could modify that.
Yes, absolutely. I was going to try to quickly find it for you, but I think the pension footnote is far too long. It's in there, but yes.
Yeah, I saw it there, but I didn't see it here.
Yep.
Anybody else?
And one other piece on that debt piece, as I just looked back at the detail quick. There was a, an additional draw on the, in the business-type fund, this page 44 of 947,000. So there was a draw on the state revolving fund in the current year, net payment on that.
Just had a quick question. You mentioned there were, sorry, five memos before, or, you know, the year before, and there's only two this year. Could you speak briefly to the, anything you know about the nature of those and how they were addressed?
Yep. So I'm sure finance can speak to specifics, but in the prior year, one of which was bank reconciliation, timing, and documentation of review, and related to that. So we don't place an opinion, I should have stated on the findings, we don't place an opinion on the internal controls, but throughout the audit process, if something comes to our attention, then we make note of that in said letter. So as we gain an understanding of the bank rec process, in previous years, documentation of review wasn't there for the month that we looked through. In the current year, those processes were updated and the review was there and timely. So that is what corrected that one. In previous years, there was voided checks or sequence documentation and retaining of the documents from the voided checks. So as we went through that process in the current year, we viewed the defaced checks adequately, and so that removed that check register. Credit card receipt documentation was last year. The one we sampled in the current year had documentation with it, as well as review of it. Retiree personnel files, same idea in the previous years. We received those in the current year. And then the disaster recovery plan was a repeat from the year prior.
Great. Thank you.
There was also a note about segregation of duties for the prior year's audit.
Yeah, same idea on the bank rec.
Related to bank reconciliation. So I was really heartened to see that, right? Like, we no longer have conflicts where somebody could, in theory, like invoice the city and also pay that check. Right? That issue's gone. So that was great. So kudos to Mike, Jessica, Michelle, and the team. You guys, I mean, from going from 13 two years ago to five last year and two this year, it's really impressive.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. I appreciate it.
Okay, next, we'll open it up for public comment. Just a reminder, this is time for residents to address council with their ideas, their thoughts, their issues. It's not a back-and-forth, it's not a question-and-answer session. You'll have three minutes to state your issues, and then I'll also ask that council agenda items.
Public comment for example.
Yeah, yeah. And also ask that council respect their three minutes of time, and council will have the option of addressing anything that was brought up at a later time during the meeting. And again, this is for items that are on the agenda. There'll be a separate public comment a little bit later for general comments. Go ahead, when you're ready.
Mayor Council, first of all, congratulations to all the individuals who won election. John Susannes, you ran a great race. I look forward to working with you, and I believe you're going to rise to our expectation. This is a time to reboot and really coalesce everyone. And you ran on bringing the city together, and I plan on working with you going forward as of this day. And if you need anything from me, please feel free to reach out to me. I think you, you probably can, you have my number, and we could work that out. Jalen, you ran a really good race. Congratulations on that. And Bruce, goes without saying, you ran a great race. I wanted to just say thank you to Kelly. You know, you've always been there for me. In the last two years, you've really been there for me. You've been there for my wife, even when we haven't called, and I appreciate that. Just a side note, Officer Roberts was actually the officer that had the emergency run on my wife, and he did a great job on that. He also saved someone's life a couple of years before that, so I want to recognize that. Want to ask a quick question. So you have two different public comments? So this one is for item on the agenda. Okay. So want to find out regarding the separation of duties, as Jason Hammond mentioned in the audit, do you guys have specifics on who's doing what now and how, if you actually have roadblocks or barriers to prevent duties from kind of merging? That's the other question. And also, the group that just left, are they doing a follow-up? Is there like a follow-up date on that? Are they coming in in the next couple of weeks or couple of months to follow up on what was presented today? Were there any errors? Any feedback like the mayor, the new mayor just indicated? Thank you.
Karen Miller, 1-8755 Glenwood Boulevard. The results of the headley override election once again prove that city leadership is out of touch with the majority of Lathrop Village residents. The 2019 road village was overwhelmingly defeated. The two dispensary ballot proposals were overwhelmingly defeated, and now the headley override proposal was overwhelmingly defeated. You shouldn't be here tonight randomly voting to cut our library services. Maybe the majority of Lathrop Village residents don't care about the library, but maybe they do. But you don't know because you haven't asked. You formed multiple committees comprised of four hand-picked residents, spoon-feeding them only the information you want them to have, and steering them to your desired outcome. Mr. Cantor often refers to deep data dives, but there's no such thing in Lathrop Village because data isn't collected. You have no way to determine the needs and wants of our community or to measure the impact of your decisions. I spent years calling upon you to bring the community together, to set our priorities and determine how to allocate our resources. I brought concerns about our fiscal health to your attention. Rapidly increasing expenditures, diminishing fund balance, out-of-control administrative costs. You mocked me, you belittled me, you disrespected me. You said we were in great financial shape, yet we weren't and we aren't. Our community is filled with smart, knowledgeable, committed residents. Use them as a resource and stop pretending that you know what's best for everyone. Do not vote to eliminate library services or anything else until you have called our community together to set our future path together.
Hi, I'm Kim Hodge. I live a block away on California southeast. I'm here to say I love the library. It's very important to me. Any day of the year, I have one to four books on my Kindle app. And here's what I understand. I went to the Berkeley Library on the Saturday after the election and asked two librarians there, would we be able to go to the Berkeley Library if the service was discontinued here? And the answer was no. Yes, I could go in there and look at a book anytime. I wouldn't be able to take out books there. And when I asked about the Libby app, the Libby app is an app that's used to be able to read eBooks on your Kindle. So what they told me was that the Libby app is even more restrictive than being able to go in there and take a library book out. In order to use the Libby app, you have to have a home library. So Southfield is our home library. Without having access to another home library, we would not be able to use, we residents, the Libby app to read on our Kindle. So when I asked about, you can't buy a membership to the Berkeley Library, the librarian said there is an app, a membership in Troy, which I learned is a couple hundred dollars. They thought you maybe could go through OCC or Detroit to get a home library, get a card. Anyways, bottom line is, we would not have access to this particular app, and I think a lot of people do e-reading at this point. So please do everything you can to check this out. If we have to lose the library, shame on us. I'm sorry about that. And I know it's a big chunk of change, but we need a way to be able to continue to use that service. So please do everything you can in your power to find out how to make this available to us in the future, even if it means paying some price which I would have rather paid in the headley override, not to a library charge. But, you know, anyways, I love the library. Please save the library for us. Thanks.
Well, Diane Anderson, and the previous speakers have touched on one of the things I want to talk about, but I want to talk about generally what's actually going on in Lathrop in the last eight years in terms of lowering property values. Everyone's property value goes up because of inflation, but not keeping pace, as we always did, from the '30s right up until the turn of the century. Want to talk about the loss of heritage buildings for the lack of code enforcement. All along Southfield Road, most of the council members, when I raised it, don't even know what I'm talking about. Heritage hasn't been protected, and heritage does increase property values. We've now about to lose the only park in the history of Lathrop that was to be there forever, any Lathrop park, as it's turned into a parking lot. Up until the last eight years, the CERNOs didn't get their way. The notion that it's private property and council couldn't control it is a nonsense. Now it's going to be a lost leader, a white elephant. There's all this massive development going on at Northland, 754 units over across from the civic center, lots and lots of vacancy, and these are down-market apartments. They're not keeping pace with prices in the upmarket neighborhoods around us. The thing I really want to talk about is the library, because way back in the '50s, we went to the Berkeley Library, then when we went to Southfield Library, that was always a part of our history. I've still got a certificate from 1959, when I read 15 books that summer for the Berkeley Library. We could only go there because we paid a part of it. Libraries are something that gives you extra value to your housing. It attracts people. It's not just something that's good so you can read a book. It actually enhances your property value. I'd like to talk about some of the things that I think may have led to the headley override defeat. We have had people going through this silly group called Mainstream USA and coming up with ridiculous things. A doggy park when we have backyards, a bicycle path. My mother was riding bikes in Lathrop in 1946. I was riding them in the '50s and the '60s. We've always done bicycles. You look at the vast number of people working in City Hall. Look at some of the contracts. I'm sorry, Mike, but you get nine weeks' holiday, and if you don't use it, he gets the money. It's unbelievable, this kind of use of city money. Yes, I think that the headley override might have had some value. I spoke to it. But I think you also, something that needs to happen is to go back and look at these silly, useless projects. Look at the fact that heritage has been undermined. We used to have signs in the city, and they were in good shape, that said, Lathrop Village, a heritage of good living. They were replaced by welcome home. We now have all kinds of inappropriate development along Southfield Road that is not reflective on upper-middle-class neighborhood like Lathrop used to be, because the DDA has become the essentially official government of Lathrop. It needs to be reversed.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Payne. I'm at 28760 Sunset Boulevard West. Congratulations, Bruce, and thank you, Kelly. I'm here about one thing, the library. The library is just not a place where they store books. A library is where your seniors go that are not tech-savvy to be able to use the computers. Libraries are where children go when they have no place else to go, to study, to read books, to be safe. And if you've looked at the statistics about our education in this area, these kids need the library more than anything. I've been going to libraries since I was four. I used to work in a library. They are places within the community that attract people. That library in Southfield is a gem. People come from all over just to see it. To be able... To be able to live in Lathrop Village and not have access to check out books, to check out movies, anything you want to do is a travesty, and I would urge you, don't do this to the community. Keep our library. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to join what Sharon says, and congratulations too to everybody, to our continuing mayor, Jeanne Barron, 27270, West Golden Gate. I am hopeful too that we are going to, when we look at budget constraints, that we will not consider doing anything to the library. One of the things too that I think is very important is, when I go to the library, I see families, I see people that maybe don't have access to a computer. I see people, I see children that are finding a love of books. And I think that that speaks a lot to the community that we are. We're a diverse community. We're proud of being a diverse community. We're proud to be a community that respects and honors people of all socioeconomic levels. And I think the idea of taking that library, which I think is something that is important to families, that's important to seniors, that's important to new residents coming in. If we don't have that access to library, then what do we have to offer people coming in? What do we have to offer families? What do we have to offer seniors that have been here for a while? To me, the library is a building block for this community. And this is a great community. This is a community that we live here. I've been a resident for, sorry to say, I almost can't remember. I think it's 34 years. And I've seen, I've seen different stages of the community, but the one thing that has been constant is our support and our bond with the library, and frankly, our bond with Southfield. And I think that's important. I hope that this council, and I count on you, council, to look at this, and when you're making your budget decisions, try to think of all of the people of Lathrop Village. And thank you very much for your attention.
Karen Harris, Cambridge Boulevard. Back in 1984, city council called for a tax ceiling for public safety that should be increased by two mils. And the purpose was to continue providing adequate public safety service. At the time, former Mayor Richard Cogger, who was a mayor here for many, many years, he and his budget committee sat down and compared the increased revenue to the increased public safety costs. When all the figures were sorted out, the committee discovered that expenses were going up faster than the city's income. This is 1984. So at that time in 1984, over 80% of the registered voters went out and voted, go Lathrop, and they overwhelmingly passed it. Now, there was a woman called Joanne Layman, and some of you may remember Joanne. She wrote an article for the Southfield Eccentric, at least weekly, called The Village Vignettes. And she and her family are very active in Lathrop. And she wrote, "Millage votes hardly ever fail, not because villagers want to give their money away, but because they feel responsible to keep Lathrop a vital community." I say, to have a vital community, we have to work with supporting our administration and our city council, just as we expect you to help work with us. It's got to be a partnership, so we need to work together. I just bring up 1984 because it sounds like 2025 to me. Same thing. So here we are, same thing over and over again. And I'm sure that as I go through historical society things, I will probably find some more examples like that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Timothy Hillman, San Quentin. Congratulations to Mayor Cantor, Councilwoman Jennings, and Councilwoman Susannas on your victories this election season, and congrats to you, Mayor Pro Tem Garrett, got that right, on your appointment. I'd also like to take a moment on the topic of elections to thank and congratulate our clerk, Alisa Emanuel. I've heard a lot of chatter about this lax election season for many reasons, but among it, none of it was complaints about the process itself. I think the community is very grateful and very satisfied with the service you and your staff provide, so thank you very much. I'd also like to congratulate a woman I've come to know quite a bit in the last few months named Carlisa Mathis, who ran against all odds in a mostly winningless kind of pointless campaign as a write-in candidate. It's very, very hard to win as a write-in candidate, especially if your name isn't something like Michael Smith that everybody can spell and spell correctly. Of course, she tried to run as a regular old candidate, but like me, she failed the paperwork test and got booted at the last minute. Not only did she put a very good concerted effort into it, she also spent the last several months attending damn near every meeting and community event, Parks and Rec event, et cetera, and that's the type of devotion and commitment I think we need of not only our candidates, but also our council people. So congratulations and thank you to her, and I encourage those of you who won your seats or who've retained your seats to continue displaying the same level of commitment that Ms. Mathis did to even her attempt at being in your seat. Lastly, with my 30 seconds or whatever I have left, I'd like to lend my voice to those speaking on behalf of our libraries and to once again encourage this council to at least delay voting on the cancellation of our library contract until we've properly renegotiated with Southfield Public Library and sought competitive bids from nearby cities like Berkeley and Oak Park and Birmingham that may have something more cost-effective for us to consider. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I did get one email that I just wanted to read in the record from Allison Hill. It says, "Dear council members, I'm writing to urge you in the strongest way possible not to eliminate funding that allows Lathrop Village residents to continue accessing the Southfield Public Library. I use the library constantly and selfishly. I cannot imagine living in a community without access to one. In fact, I never have. A public library is not a luxury or an optional amenity. It is a cornerstone of a healthy, educated, connected community. My now-grown children grew up using the library. They were able to browse, not just order books online. They learned to explore interests, research independently, approach adults for help, discover new subjects, and spent every summer participating in reading programs that helped shape their confidence and curiosity. The library wasn't just a building, it was a formative part of their childhood and their education. Losing access would be more than an inconvenience. It would mean losing children's and also adults' programming, access to technology, learning resources, meeting spaces, community events, and a welcoming place that serves everyone regardless of age, income, or circumstance. The Southfield Public Library offers services that are necessary, used, valued, and deeply impactful. I would be devastated to see our community lose something so essential. Please, for current and future residents and the continued strength of Lathrop Village, protect this funding." Thank you for your time and consideration. All right, if there's nothing else, I will close public comment, and we will move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been motioned and approved. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Jennings? Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Susannas?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Cantor?
Yes. The consent agenda has been approved. Next, we'll go to a public hearing for community development block grant funds for the project year 2026. Have the city administrator introduce that, please?
Thank you, Mayor Cantor. So every single year, via Oakland County, the city has issued community development block grant dollars for projects throughout the city. This year, we are looking to do a park, minor ADA parks project with this. So we receive about $7,000 each year. What we're looking to do this year is, in conjunction with our M D N R grant we submitted from Unisoul Park, is create a new ADA path, walk pathway from the parking lot next to the community garden, which essentially shortens the distance for those who have trouble walking to get to the playground. So the $7,000, if approved throughout the resolution night, would be going towards a project to essentially create a new sidewalk.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody would like to comment on the community development block grant project, please step up to the microphone. Okay, if there's no one, then we'll close the public hearing and move on to tonight's action requests. The first action request for consideration or approval is a request to approve a resolution for the community development block grant, which is on page 97 of our packets.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Cantor. So like I was saying, every single year, to finalize the application for C D B G funds, the city council has to essentially sign on to the project we're proposing and approve a resolution. So include your packet, is that a resolution for this proposed project?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-19, Community Development Block Grant Project Year 2026.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded, or during discussion?
There's no accompanying cause?
That's where the $7,000 comes into play. We have to make sure the county approves the project first, and then from there, we'll either work with our current concrete contractor, if it's under five grand, or if it starts getting over that, then we'll start soliciting quotes. Based on the way the county distributes C D B G funds, realistically, this won't be a project until 2027. So for example, last year, we did a similar thing where we were looking to put in a new concrete pad. The county just started releasing C D B G funds two weeks ago, so realistically, that project won't happen until spring '26. So this could potentially be something you guys see in the future.
Anything else? Okay, that's for roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Susannas?
Yep.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Cantor?
Yes, motion's been approved. Next, we'll have a considered for approval, a request to receive and file the fiscal year '25 audit, and that's on page 100 of the packet.
Thank you, Mayor. So it's customary that council approves receiving and filing the audit. That gives staff and the auditors permission to essentially do the required filing with the state.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the fiscal year 2024-2025 financial audit.
Second.
So motioned and seconded, any discussion?
Did we want to answer Ian's question about whether his follow-up reports expected or anything?
I think that'd be a question for councils, what would you like to see? As the auditor noted, we have separated duties internally. That's just essentially internal workflow practice. Then I think it would just be, what do you guys want to see from his other question?
He also asked about any errors. We didn't see any errors in the report.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, I broke down his other question, but...
I wrote it down too.
Yeah, right. Put it.
Are there any segregation of duty findings in the audit? The answer is no. Follow-up, is there a plan to follow up with the auditor?
Right.
And are there any errors in the audit report?
So as for following up with the audit, naturally, we'll work with them over the next month, because they help us do the report filing. Then after that, most likely, we won't talk to them again until May, June, when we're coming up to the end of the budget.
Any other comments? All right, I just want to thank Mike and Michelle and Jessica and the rest of the staff for their hard work on the audit. I think it's great that we've reduced the material, continued to reduce the material weaknesses, and look forward to solutions for the remaining two. So if there's nothing else, then we'll go to a roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Susannas?
Yep.
Okay, the audit has been approved. The next item on the agenda is item C on page 180, a request to approve the cancellation of the library contract between the city of Lathrop Village and the city of Southfield.
Thank you, Mayor. So as noted during the study session, the voters naturally have spoken, and the headly override proposal is not approved. As council is aware, city operations are going to need to change to balance the budget in FY '26, '27, and the future years. It's anticipated the city will need to cut nearly $200,000, $250,000 worth of expenses for this next fiscal year, and this does not factor in the need for some capital items that will be needed to operate the city. The current contract for the Southfield Library is 46 years old, and the cancellation clause requires at least a one-year notice cancellation. The city budgets approximately $190,000 each year for this service. There's no requirement in the city charter or state law that requires a maintenance value to provide library services. And as discussed during the study session, it felt like city council will table this decision to get some additional information, so looking for discussion and some direction.
Mr. Mayor, I do think that this should be tabled, and I think that all other options be thought through before the cancellation of the library. So I make a motion to table the request to approve the cancellation of the library contract between the city of Lathrop Village and the city of Southfield.
Is there a second? Four seconds.
Everybody's seconded.
Who's seconded?
Everybody.
I'll take three.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
No discussion on a motion to table.
Oh, right, 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 yeah, okay. So we'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Susannas?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
The item is tabled. We'll move on to item D, which is on page 184 of the packet, for a new ordinance regarding licensing and regulation of outdoor collection boxes.
I know this is what you guys have all been waiting for tonight, was the discussion of the outdoor collection boxes. This is something that came up a couple of months ago, council's request to explore this with certain criteria that they wanted. So what I did was I drafted an ordinance modeled off of Ypsilanti Township, which seemed to fit all of the parameters that the city was looking for, requiring permits for outdoor collection boxes, prohibitions with respect to where they can be located, the size that they, maximum size, what type of surface they can be placed on, how they would work within the flow of a business, can't be an impediment to parking spaces or the flow of traffic. It does require that the property owner, if not the owner of the collection box, has to be a part of the application, the permit process, so they have to sign off on it. And lastly, there's a proximity limitation, the number of collection boxes within a thousand-foot difference, or a thousand-foot distance between each other.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance Number 2025-10, an ordinance to amend Article 18 business by adding a new article, Article 8, outdoor collection boxes, to provide for the licensing and regulation of outdoor collection boxes, and schedule a second reading at our December 15, 2025 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion seconded, any discussion?
Can you just speak briefly, for my benefit, what precipitated this?
It was, I guess council probably could better answer that question, but it was a request from council that there are...
Are we seeing an influx of these boxes?
Well, we have some of them that have fallen into repair. They have a tendency to just appear overnight in parking lots. There's concern that there may be some placed in vacant commercial properties, so not having an ordinance that speaks to and addresses that, the request was made to draft one that would prevent some of those concerns.
Having an ordinance that requires registration provides us with an awareness and a policing capability that we don't currently have.
That's one of the biggest aspects, because we have had a couple appear on one of our vacant lots, and the owner didn't even know they were there of that lot. So even trying to get a hold of the box companies to get them removed has been a headache, where we have had to go and remove them ourselves. So this doesn't straight-up prohibit them, this just helps us manage them.
And was there any discussion, forgive me for this, but of straight-up prohibition of these things?
That's a little bit trickier. There has been some case law that has interpreted these as First Amendment free speech. So the permitting process and regulation is what other communities have done to address some of the same concerns that this body has had.
Yeah, also, I think other issues with them being close to the road, where people complain about that as well. I do have one question on page 187 of the packet, where it says, "Collection boxes shall be serviced and emptied as needed, but at least every seven days." Feels like the, kind of the same issue we have with, you know, commercial vehicles parked, you know, having a two-day limit, and, you know, signs on people's lawns, you know, having a 90-day limit or whatever the limit is. It doesn't seem like that's very enforceable. So the one thing I was wondering, is it possible to, or are we permitted to change that? So maybe there's some type of document that's required to be on the collection box with an indication... to be on the collection box with an indication of, of the date of, of service? I mean, obviously, they can forge that, but.
Yeah, I mean.
But it needs to require something.
I did think about that, like, how are you gonna, this is another one of those things, like you said, how are you gonna police that? What, in my mind was, you know, if you see stuff overflowing out of this bin, if Steve sees that on Monday, and then the following Monday, it's still overflowing out of the bin, clearly it hasn't been.
Right.
Emptied within the week. So, that was my thoughts on that, but I think we could put something on there that they, kind of like the porta potty guy that comes and services the porta potty.
That's what I was thinking of.
Signs off that it's been emptied. Again, I don't, you know, we'll see how that, you know, we can put it in there, we can see how that translates.
And Mayor, we, we talked, we reviewed this with code enforcement, and that's kind of our hopes with this too. Well, we're not necessarily as worried about what's in the box as soon as it starts overflowing. So overflowing naturally, just like everything, it's easy to take, take a photo, like Scott was saying.
Right, secret fix or whatever, okay, that's fine. Any, any other discussion? Okay, ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Susannas?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Cantor?
Yes. The motion passes. So we will move on to item E on page one-ninety-three of the packet, which is a request to approve a zoning ordinance amendment for cryptocurrency ATMs.
I'm sorry, can you just clarify something for me?
Sure.
We, we didn't read it.
Yeah, Scott, do you want to address that? We didn't actually read it.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not an actual, we don't read the verbatim, it's, it's the.
Fact that it's here.
Yeah, it's, it's in your packet, it's, it's a public, you know, can access it, but this is the first introduction, I guess, to the.
So the clock starts now. If we had voted no, it's still in here, but it wouldn't have counted.
Correct.
Yeah, we, yeah, county, under the charter requires, you can't vote, you can't enact an ordinance at the first meeting it's introduced.
Well, I understood that, yeah.
So it has to be first and second, and then the second reading of it.
Yeah, okay, that's the required two, two readings.
Thanks.
Yep.
So, Mike, could you introduce the?
I'm actually gonna turn it over to Austin.
So it was over this past summer, there were, during a public comment of a city council meeting, residents brought concerns about cryptocurrency ATMs in the city. City council directed to city staff to take the planning commission a potential ordinance regarding the regulation of these machines. So beginning in our July twenty-twenty-five meeting, we started discussions about a potential regulatory change to add an ordinance regarding cryptocurrency ATMs. We asked our planning consultant to do research, and we started a conversation. We found that there are currently no cryptocurrency ATM machines in the city operating, but there are a number within a mile of the city surrounding us. And also, researchers found there's been a great deal of crime that is committed through these machines, similar to what Lieutenant Zhang spoke about, where a resident was defrauded into sending a large amount of money through the mail, that is now, especially with the adverse of AI, that residents and especially seniors are being preyed upon, using artificial intelligence and mimicking loved ones, and asking them to send great deals of money through cryptocurrency ATMs. There was just fraud that was committed in a local community where a resident was scammed out of sixty thousand dollars. So this is a new technology, it is emerging. We look to see what other communities in the state have regulated these machines. The only other one is the city of Gross Point Park. They have an ordinance that we mimicked ours off of. We worked with a great deal with Attorney Baker to make sure that what we were implementing was actually able to help our residents in restrict fraud without an overreach for those who want to use these ATMs in a legitimate manner. So we draft, the planning commission during our last meeting approved an ordinance that would require all machines to be registered with the city and the police department, have a physical warning on the front about fraud as an attempt to, for those using machines to actually be prompted to stop and read it. So one other measure to actually intervene before they actually deposit funds. Unlike traditional banking system, and also with ATMs, FDIC ensures these funds. There is no regulatory body that ensures cryptocurrency. As one of the aspects of cryptocurrency that individuals like is the ability to have, to be anonymous when using them. So once funds are deposited, they are moved quickly between wallets, and being able to find a trail is lost. So having these machines registered, as well as we are put in a zoning location of only in the vehicular zoning district, as well as putting a buffer between these machines, similar to other ordinances we drafted earlier this summer and passed, like the thrift store and also check cashing stores. So this is a step for public safety. We think it balances those who want to use machines legitimately, and also a great deal of fraud that is unfortunately preying upon the most vulnerable, vulnerable in our community. So we, the planning commission has passed along to you to review and hopefully adopt.
The only thing I'll add to that is we, there is also a transaction limit. It's, you're, in a twenty-four-hour period, you can do a maximum of no more than two transactions, not to exceed a thousand dollars per transaction. So the most that someone could potentially lose if they were a victim of fraud would be two thousand dollars before, you know, they would hopefully catch on that, you know, little Timmy was not being really taken, and they weren't sending cryptocurrency to get him back, so.
So is that something that you'd be required to do in the software, or is this another thing that, like, how do you enforce it?
So it's good, that's gonna be part of, yeah, that'll be part of the software, but it'll be part of the licensing requirement. In obtaining, obtaining a license, they will have to demonstrate that it meets the standards that are, that are in this ordinance.
Great.
And just for John's, Councilman Susannas' is, this is in our zoning ordinance, so it's, there's not a first and second reading of it. The, the first introduction was at the planning commission. So this is, the council is taking deciding action on this ordinance tonight. If approved, it'll be noticed and effective ten days after publication.
Somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two-five-eleven, a zoning ordinance amendment establishing limitations to cryptocurrency ATMs within the city of Lether Village.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded, any discussion? Oh, yeah.
What you described, oh.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Well, what you described was a nightmare, and it's true. I mean, we know that cryptocurrency, you can't track it, so once it's gone, it's gone. You also described the fact that, that there's multiple cryptocurrency ATMs within a mile of here. Are we, again, I'm sorry for the question, but are we unable to prohibit these? Because I don't know why we'd want them in our, in our, our thing. Again, if, if they were, the closest one was twenty miles from here, okay, maybe there's a call for it, but it's kind of like liquor stores, how many do you need?
Jason, was that talked about in the planning commission?
Yep.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I'm gonna defer to Attorney Baker.
Yeah, that was, that was discussed extensively amongst the planning commission, and that was one of their initial requests, was just an outright ban. A couple reasons I was, I was reluctant to, to agree to that or to sign off on that. You know, one, this is, this is relatively new. There's only one other, I think it was Spokane, Washington, that did an outright ban on these, and that was June of this year. So we have yet to see what, what the fallout from that is or may potentially be. With, with zoning ordinances in particular, there's a concept called exclusionary zoning, where you, you're basically zone of use or something like this, an oc, occupation or use within, within your community, zoned it out entirely through the zoning district. That's, that's generally frowned upon. And so also with being, you know, with this being relatively new, you never want to be one of the first communities to test out an ordinance, because, you know, you might be the pilot court case, which obviously would, would incur cost to the city to defend that. So this, this approach, ultimately, planning commission felt that this approach was more of a prudent approach in terms of limiting potential liability to the city if they, if there were to be a challenge, and also implementing restrictions that protect the residents from these types of, these types of scams.
We also talked about the fact that younger generations actually use cryptocurrency in day-to-day payment of their lives and how they run things. And so having cryptocurrency ATMs in the community could be a benefit to those people that actively utilize cryptocurrency payments in their day-to-day lives. It's an aging community, cyclically, it's gonna happen at some point where it's gonna shift, and the community will be younger, and more than likely, those people are going to want to use a service like that. And so we anticipate that business owners in the city are probably gonna want to register with the city to have a ATM, a cryptocurrency ATM at their location. So then it's really important that we have the ability for those businesses to be able to offer the service, to control how many there are and how they are provided to those users.
And the distance requirement will control how many we have, to one, maybe two.
That's right.
Yeah.
One, maybe two, and the number of transactions in the twenty-four-hour period limits, it helps reduce the impact of a fraudulent event, and the, the transaction limits help that as well.
I, I have no problem with the language of this, if we're actually gonna let them come in, and we feel like we have to. I mean, I would, does that mean if, if, if strip clubs want to come here, it's, is that we have to decide?
Strip clubs are explicitly prohibited.
So, so, and why is that? Because somebody went to court for it?
That's a health and safety concern, it's a little bit.
Let me ask you another practical question.
If you look at, actually, just to, if you look at our, our part of the zoning ordinance, it's one of, I think the only area in the zoning ordinance that actually cites case law.
Yeah.
As supporting why we prohibit that, that particular type of.
Yeah, yeah.
Currently, there's nothing restricting an ATM, a cryptocurrency ATM, to be placed in the city anywhere right now.
Well, no, I understand that, I understand that. All right, last question, then, I'll be done anyway. If, if we pass this, and we find out that the case law and wherever that was, has supported, you know, the outright ban, would we still have the option to go back and revoke this, even if the businesses were here?
Yeah, we can always update the ordinances.
Yeah, well, technically, no, because if, if there's a business, you can always go back and you can amend the ordinance, but the last part of his was, if, if they're already here. So because this is a zoning, you would, they would be legally non-conforming uses. So with a zoning ordinance, you can have a legal non-conforming use versus a general police power ordinance. Those can have, Bruce referenced during the study session, can have an amortization schedule, whereas everyone has to come into compliance with the new ordinance. So, so while we could prohibit, and obviously, if, if an individual or organization did have one of these crypto ATMs, and that either came out of service, was in conflict with, with the standards under which it was adopted or approved, then they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to replace it with a new one. Somebody else can come in and put a new one there, if the ordinance was amended to prohibit them. But just, don't want you to think that, oh, if they are here, we could tell them that they have to go.
The, the ordinance can be updated, but it's, now you run into the issue.
The ordinance absolutely could be updated. If there aren't any located, then none would be able to be located.
Anything else? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Susannas?
No.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Cantor?
Yes. The motion passes. We'll move on to the next item, item F, which is on page two-hundred of the packet, a request to approve DPS gutter replacement.
Thank you, Mayor. As the majority of council is aware, the DPW DPS building requires substantial maintenance, if not full building replacement. While funding doesn't exist for full building replacement, we're gonna do what we can to limp this building along as long as we can. One of those areas is gutters and downspouts, including the most recently approved capital improvement plan, and including the budget was ten thousand dollars to replace the gutters and downspouts for this facility. Over the past few weeks, we've been soliciting quotes and trying to get vendors out there to provide quotes. So in your packet, we are recommending to award a contract to leaf filter for estimated costs of seventy-seven-hundred dollars to replace the gutters at the DPW building.
Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the DPS building gutter replacement project to leaf filter for an estimated cost of seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars.
Second?
Yeah.
The motion is seconded, Jalen. Is there any discussion?
And if we do nothing, then what happens?
The building's gonna keep staying the way it is. The biggest thing with this, since we are trying to limp it along, as council is aware, we did have water issues in the building over the past year. So all we're trying to do is mitigate that as much as humanly possible, and having gutters that aren't rusted through and actually conveying the water away from the building, we think's gonna be a help. Naturally, this is a Band-Aid on this building. It's not a long-term fix in any means, but we're doing what we can.
They don't, they don't know how to do this?
So the seven, so the seven thousand dollars in actuality could just be kind of thrown down the drain if the building collapses or gets some work to do here.
Yeah, anything in that building that we do out there could, building caught on fire if it fell down, because it's over fifty years old, and has that limited maintenance. But, yeah, we're, we're trying to do what we can to get it by.
And the memo mentions that in the capital improvement plan, there was approval of ten thousand dollars?
Well, in the, in the capital, this was a listed approved project in the capital improvement plan. Naturally, the CIP includes the estimated cost for these projects, so that's ten thousand dollars. The ten thousand dollars was approved as part of the budget.
Okay, so it's both in the capital improvement plan?
Correct.
And budgeted for?
Correct.
Any, any other questions are coming? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Susannas?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is passed. We'll move on to item G, which is on page two-ten of our packet, a request to appoint the downtown, a downtown development authority board member. In the study session, Mayor Pro Tem Garrett, you know, recommended that we appoint Tracy Williams, and I will continue to make that recommendation. We had three great candidates. One of the great things that we've been seeing recently is that, that it's been a really hard choice to make some of these appointments, because all the resumes that come in are great, and we feel that they can all fulfill those roles. But we're recommending Tracy because of her relationship with Oakland Thrive, which falls right into the sweet spot of the, of what a DDA board member does. So I am recommending Tracy Williams, and we've, entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint Tracy Williams to the downtown development authority for a term expiring February first, twenty-twenty-eight.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, just basically what you said, I think Tracy will be a great fit for the DDA. She currently works for Oakland Thrive. They work with a lot of the businesses along Southfield Road, so I think it's a great opportunity to continue to build that, build on that work.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Susannas?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Tracy is, is appointed to the position. Mike, can we make sure that we notify the people who did not get appointed, so that they know? With that, that ends the action requests for the evening. We'll move on to the city administrator report.
Nothing today, Mayor.
City attorney report.
Nothing for me tonight.
Okay, reports of boards and commissions, downtown development authority. Planning commission.
Last month's planning commission meeting, we recommended for approval the cryptocurrency ATM ordinance that the city council just approved. And we also did a, a review of a site plan for the property at two-seven-six-zero-zero Southfield Road to two-seven-six-five-one Southfield Road. This is the, the building in which Middle Eats and Rita's Ice and S&amp;K Staffing and so are all located. Essentially, it's an expansion of Middle Eats Restaurant into adjacent property to their south, currently unutilized. They're going to be turning that into seated dining space for the restaurant. And that site plan was approved.
I forgot for the DDA also.
Go, go back to the evening.
We're having the winter festival, December fifth, from six to eight in the evening here at the commuter.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Parks and Rec. So I just wanted to thank Elaine Mantinen. She has stepped down off of the Parks and Recreation Committee. I think she's been on the committee for four or five years. She's been an excellent committee member with a lot of creativity and experience and energy. We are. We are soliciting a replacement. It's been in the newsletter, so you can go through there to get an application to apply and I'm sure we'll get some, some great candidates. In terms of upcoming events, we have a, a new event called Woody Invasives, which is invasive species lecture and field, what's the word, field experience with Reed Bowsky. That's on December 3rd and December 6th, so that should be very interesting. As Austin just mentioned, Winter Fest is on Friday, December 5th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We have an ornament making class coming up on December 10th. And then on Monday nights, we have yoga in the building from 6:30 to 7:30. So hopefully residents will take advantage of some of these, these opportunities and we'll see you there. Tree Committee.
At the next meeting, which is, I'm sorry, my phone just went. The next meeting is December 15th, not December 15th.
December 15th?
No, I'm asking, my phone closed.
The next meeting is December 1st.
Yes, it's December 1st, sorry. I'm thinking of something else. December 1st at 4:00 PM and it'll be held up here and we've been in contact with Davy Trees and they want to become a partner with us and so they'll be coming, their arborist will be at the next meeting and they want to talk about how they can just partner with us and give us some free saplings. Yeah, that's it.
School Board.
Sure, so the school board, well, no, I was, the school system, they received a grant from Volkswagen E-Labs. So it's basically like a real world STEM experience that they are doing for Southfield Public Schools as well as Birmingham Public Schools. Also, they received a $3.7 million grant funding 10 new electric school buses.
How much?
3.7 million.
Doesn't seem like enough for 10 buses.
Hey, who knows? I'm not, I'm not on the board to do the math. And then also with Ashanti Bland being voted as a Southfield City Council member, there's now a school board seat open. So if any Laker Village residents are interested, just wanted to let you know that the seat is open.
Thank you. All right, any unfinished new business? Okay, so we will open it up again to public comment. This, this time, public comment is for anything that you want to talk about. Again, it's not a back and forth, three minutes, and the time will, will be yours and council has the opportunity to address your comments afterwards when we do mayor and council comments.
Sorry, didn't introduce myself the last time. Ian Furbies on Laker Village. So three items on the agenda that you just went through. So the cryptocurrency ATM, the number is 80%. 80% of crimes are happening at crypto and in every case, the police is called there. So the crime scene is the ATM. So let's try to bake in some paradigm, right? Instead of, you know, aging adults being scammed at the ATM, maybe we can buffer that by having them report into the police first before they actually go to the ATM to submit. I know it sounds kind of weird, but banks have a limit on ATMs, right? You can't just wire 20 grand, right? So this would be us trying to bake it in, right? So an elderly person would go to the police and say, hey, my bank is telling me someone is blah, 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 and I have to wire this. Bells will go off right away and they will start asking questions because it is a tax on the police. It's a tax on the police force. The 80%, they show up to the ATM. So just keep that in mind. So we might have to bake that in. The, the, the electric buses, that includes infrastructure charging. So that's where that 10 million comes in. Let's see, DPS, did someone ask anyone from DPS if they can actually do gutter repair? We should try to seriously think about that because those guys are really handy, just those three things. Okay, so I voted yes on a headly override because I didn't want to lose the following things. I didn't want to lose chipping, wood chipping. I didn't want to lose the library. I didn't want to lose us being able to not hire part-time police officers. And I'm frustrated because the people who could have voted yes, voted no because the information that was out there, they actually believed it. They didn't do any research. And the bottom line is you got to do your research. I mean, if you've been here 20, 30 years, you're only going to pay $60 of an increase in tax. Worst case, if you're five to 10 years here, maybe 300. And I get it, people are on limited income, right? If you voted no, I'm not mad at you, but understand, you're losing, you're losing the benefits of the city. The police department just sat up here and you heard how engaged they are. So now we're going to say, okay, we're not going to hire part-time police officers because you didn't do the research? You didn't, you may have come to a couple of town halls, but you didn't do the research and you relied on someone else to feed you information over the internet? Okay, so John, I realize you're new and we're trying to start fresh here and I'm trying not to make it personal by any means of the imagination, but clearly Karen Miller is frustrated because it's clear she doesn't think council or anybody on council is listening to her. So maybe you could be an advocate for her and, and bring forth information. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I want to thank the Laker Village Police Department for two things. First of all, what am I holding in my hand? No paper. So I was informed by our future Police Chief Zhang on the way in here that they had caught a group of individuals distributing the safe flyers and they, I believe, was it five individuals? Yeah, five people. They have been informed that if they come back and do that again, they will be arrested. So thank you. The other thing is I was very happy to hear the story about the scam that was stopped. I have been following, I've been reading every month, the training and the training that you guys are getting and I, that has paid off for us. I see, even though I'm famously not on Facebook, I read some other social media and every time somebody says, I've just been scammed, people chime in and say, police do nothing? Or police can't do anything? And you've just proven that that's not true. So thank you.
Well, I want to talk about the United States Constitution. I'm a member of the Three Flags Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. I do have relatives that fought in the revolution and that's the Laker Village, V.A.R., founded in 1939. And I joined it because of my work that I do as the Constitution Lady for that chapter. I write articles on the Constitution every month. I give talks about it. The Constitution is my thing. And I'm very concerned about the fact that this year, Laker Village did not join in Constitution Week. For those of you who aren't familiar, the U.S. Congress has declared the week of September 17th each year as Constitution Week because that's the week our Constitution was adopted, they sent out for ratification. And every year, as the Constitution Lady, I go to local governments all over the place. I ask people to issue proclamations in support of the Constitution. That's kind of a motherhood thing. I don't know anybody that wouldn't do that. And generally, it's just mayors do proclamations because you can't be on a council unless you support the Constitution. And in the past, Laker has done that. But this year, I had Southfield, Beverly Hills, Bingham Farms, Franklin, Lawson, Berkeley, Royal Oak, Birmingham, long, long list anyway. And for the first time this year, Laker didn't participate in Constitution Week. The process is I drop off the letter to the mayor and a sample Constitution, then the mayors get back to me and I collect it and I turn it into the D.A.R. So I just want to register my severe disappointment in my hometown that Laker this year did not support Constitution Week.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Ellen Greenia from Santa Anne. I just want to thank the council for listening to us in the study session and also here regarding our library concerns and thank you for tabling it and being able to look over all, all the options. So really appreciate you guys.
Anyone else back there or no? Anyone else want to speak? No.
Hello again, Timothy Hillman, San Quentin. First, thank you Jonathan Terra for leading the charge on our disgusting save coupon packets that litter our streets. I really, really appreciate that. You've been steadfast in your activism against it, so thank you. I'm going to get out my soapbox for just a few seconds. Bear with me, I do this all the time and I intend to do it again. I want to begin by saying thank you to Chief Zhang and I've genuinely moved, I was, by your presentation tonight. It's a reminder that good news and positive community spirit really are all around us in Laker Village, so thank you. But we have to be present to receive it and I worry that many residents stay away because the energy in this room can feel tense and unwelcoming sometimes. Earlier today, I observed a long-term and influential resident refer to this council as thin-skinned, insecure little creeps. I wish I could say this is unusual, but it isn't. I see this type of conduct all the time, online and in person. I encourage all of us to think carefully about the tone we set. Are our words consistent with the values we claim? Do they strengthen the community we say we care about? Do they model the respect we want to pass on? We can debate and disagree passionately, but the language we use matters and when we resort to insults and to humanizing rhetoric, people withdraw, participation shrinks and good people stop showing up. When we set down hostility, we make room for moments like earlier tonight when Chief Zhang gave us his report. There is so much good happening here. We need to do a better job of centering that and clinging to the best in each other because we'll all be better off for it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll close public comment and open up mayor and council comments. Just a couple of comments. Again, Jonathan, thank you for, for your persistence and, and driving, getting the safe periodical removed. That's, that's great news. I think everybody appreciates that. Interesting concept or suggestion from Ian about the DPW with the gutters. I mean, I, I was going to say, they probably don't have the time with only three people, but it's definitely an interesting suggestion. And then also Ian's other comment about, I don't know if we can, if there's any way we'd ever be able to do that, require people to go to the police before going to an ATM.
No, I don't, I don't know how we could legislatively do that, but Jason probably touched on this as well, but that's something that the Planning Commission did address and they had requested that Austin and, and actually Tom was going to be working on something of, kind of like a refrigerator magnet, people that we could send out to residents, just kind of alerting them of these types of scams and that if someone is, you know, you get a strange phone call where, you know, claiming to be a relative that has been, you know, abducted or taken and you, your only recourse, you can't go to the police, you have to go to a cryptocurrency ATM, you know, your first call should be to the police. Just pointing out some of the typical tactics that these scammers utilize. So that is something that Planning Commission did anticipate and I'm sure Tom, knowing Tom has probably already got three drafts of it that are 47 pages long and he's shrinking it down to fit on the standard refrigerator.
Yeah, that was something that Planning Commissioner Robinson brought up at the end of our last meeting, that there should be, tied to the zoning ordinance change, should be some sort of outreach and communication and education effort to the community about the risks of crypto ATMs and what, what to do if you're not sure.
Yeah, well, might be a good thing is to incorporate it into the Adopt an Elderly Resident Program as well, you know, give them a packet of information. Also want to thank everybody for coming out to talk about the library, both here, here tonight and in the study session. Yeah, we've, we've got some tough decisions to make as a council over the next, next few months. Unfortunately, elections have consequences. The residents, you know, told us that we needed to live within the, you know, the revenue that we have and, and the only way that we're going to be able to do that is to make some cuts. So it's not going to be pleasant. We've got a lot of hard work to do, but the input that you provide does, does help us. So please keep, continue providing the input. And the last thing I'll say is just I want to wish everybody a happy holiday coming up this Thursday. I hope you have a safe and, and a nice holiday. Turn it over to Mayor Pro-Tam next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To address, if I may, Ms. Anderson?
Sure.
I think normally she would send the mayor an email, as she said, to say that she would be sending me something, that she would be sending the mayor something so we were aware of it. If I'm not mistaken, she handed it to you and then you put it into my mailbox and I didn't realize it was there until after September. So just to clarify that it was kind of like not doing the normal thing, trying to, I guess, not speak to me or something. So.
Did we not pass a proclamation in the?
We did the next month.
The next month's meeting?
Yes, we did.
Waited, wait. Jalen, Jason?
I had a couple of things. So I'd be getting a couple of inquiries related to the, the budget, especially the budget surplus and the consideration that, pieces of information, things that the council is and the city staff is looking at relative to balancing our budget. There are questions around things like, well, if we have budget surpluses, well, why are we asking voters to approve a headly override? It's kind of a moot point because the vote has already happened, but the fact of the matter is we've had budget surpluses because of sources of revenue and sources of expenses that we budgeted for but didn't incur. Sources of revenue are things like payments after the fact for sidewalk repair programs, which the city paid for upfront and then got revenue for in future years, just as an example. Sources of expenses that we budgeted for and didn't incur are things like open police department positions which went unfilled and therefore we didn't have to pay their salaries or their benefits. So it's, it's uninformed to assume that just because the city has budget surpluses that we don't have revenue problems whatsoever. Right? You have to consider these things in the full context, not just in, oh, well, the city was able to add to the general fund this year, so clearly the city doesn't have any concerns about next year's budget. There are also things about, concerns about the types of things that the city is looking at to cut. Obviously, the library was one thing and we heard it tonight, how people are concerned about that. There's people are questioning, well, why aren't we looking at reducing staffing or adjusting salary, staff salaries or benefits? And the fact of the matter is we will gather information about all those types of things. Anybody who thinks that we're only looking at cutting services and not looking at right size, or right size is the wrong word, looking at the potential impact of any changes in staffing or salaries of staffing. In fact, during our study session, it was discussed that one option could be to go to halftime staffing of the city. So if anybody thinks that we're not looking at what's, as staffing of the city staff as one component of a thing that we're gathering information on to make informed decisions about how do we balance the budget, then you're not paying attention. So I guess that's, that's all I'll have to say about that. We are working very, very hard to gather information and make informed decisions and that means looking at things that are, may feel uncomfortable or awkward to look at, but we have to do our due diligence. And just because we're looking at something like cutting services like the library or, or chipping, or leaf pickup, or even outsourcing the police department, just because we're investigated doesn't mean it's a foregone conclusion that those things are going to happen. We have to do our due diligence.
If you don't mind, I want to add one thing to what you said because I, I had some notes on there that I forgot to get to when we, when we talked about the audit. You know, you mentioned the surplus and how that doesn't relate to the, the current issues. I mean, just to highlight that, I mean, we, yes, we had a surplus because of staff vacancies and sidewalk revenue coming in, but that didn't mean that we didn't have a $575,000 hole in this year's budget and we're anticipating a $250,000 plus hole in the, in the next year's budget, so.
Great point. Yeah, we, we filled the, this year's hole with Public Act 33 special assessment.
Right.
We got to figure out what to do about next year's hole.
Yeah.
I also want to say. I also want to say happy Thanksgiving gift.
I'll go next, real quick. I'll be brief. So I wanted to say thank you to the residents who did vote for me. It's been a pleasure serving four years and I plan to happily serve four more. Also, I wanted to just call out, I wanted us to make sure we're being team players. We all can second and we can make motions and second and we can vote no after that. So I just want to make sure we're all doing that. Don't want to go down that, again, that road again. And then Festival of Lights was tonight at Michigan First. We, of course, weren't able to attend, but hopefully some families who were, it was kind of tough. I wanted to be on time. But hopefully some families in Lathir Village were able to participate and have fun. Also, I just wanted to say, I'll read out my email in case anyone needs to email me, have any questions. I feel like I don't get emails enough. So jayjenings@lathirvillage.org. So that's all I have.
Yeah, a couple of things. Well, first of all, thanks to anybody that voted for me. And I'm, really, it is an honor to be on this council. I also want to thank everybody on the council. They've reached out to me ahead of the time and made me feel welcome. And I think we're going to be a good working body, so I'm looking forward to that. Just a couple of real quick things. I think I would not characterize it as not paying attention if people, you know, have, have doubts or, you know, whatever the case may be about what the process is going to be because they don't know what the process is going to be. And I think it'll be really important that, that we're very clear about the types of things that we're doing to, to look at these cuts, you know. Because you can do everything right and if people don't know it, you know, it doesn't count as much. So I just think, you know, it'll be good for us to be really clear about that. The other thing I think that is interesting, and it speaks a little bit to Tim's message, although maybe not the way he anticipated, but to the extent that there's been factions and things like that in, in, in the city, at least tonight, I, I can think of one issue that brought everybody together. And that is the library. So I think there's something there. And I think the hard part between just being, looking at the cuts and, and the reaction is that we have to understand, well, what is the weight for each of these things? And I don't know how we gather that information. I don't know how we include the city more than just having the people who show up here speak. And it could be that all the library people show up tonight and they're all right there and nobody else cares. I don't think that's the case. But it would be good for, to, to just try to, you know, figure out ways to include them in that process, both by communicating what we're up to and what Mike's up to as well as we can. And then also maybe finding ways to give them a bigger forum. One last thing and then I'll be quiet because I, new guys shouldn't talk this much. But, oh, it's just something that occurred to me that, that's been on my mind, which we were talking about getting a packet out to the seniors, the known seniors, et cetera. And I think there's a, if that's the way to do it, or, you know, the old quarterly's, I know they were expensive. I know we're talking about cuts here. But there's clearly a, a lot of people that are not reached by internet. And I don't know how we bridge that gap. The quarterly was, you know, the, you know, I mean, the old print one, I know was expensive. I don't know if it could be cut down in size, but if there's a delivery system for, you know, things like warnings and, and that type of thing, is there something that we could do to communicate some of what's happening here? Whether it's, you know, the things we talked about tonight or, and then this is my last point. I haven't heard much about the master planning since the first meeting. And I just think, if nothing else, that we can put that in the discussion, you know, coming up. And again, you know, my position there is very similar, which is how do we best incorporate resident input? And other than that, I, like I said, I'm really honored to be on this council and I look forward to serving for at least two years.
When is the next master plan meeting?
They're, they're finalizing the market research portion, so they're doing some of that backend information gathering. And I think the goal is hopefully Planning Commission have a discussion at their December meeting and then go from there.
All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.